Call tonight's meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
Our flag, particularly the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, could I please get a motion for the minutes for the January fourteenth meeting as well as the approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second, thanks Justin, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, please get a motion for section two dot one, which is a consent agenda for personnel.
So moved.
Thanks Steve.
Sure.
Thanks Tim, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Could I please get a motion for section three, new business general, which includes appointment of secondary principal, appointment of K twelve assistant principal, appointment of interim principal or interim assistant principal and approval of Oneida County Board of Education contract.
So moved.
Thank you Justin, thanks Tim, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard. Moves us into our board discussion.
Nothing to discuss, just very excited about the yes.
Welcome personnel this week, man, yeah. Happy to have you both on board, welcome.
Thank you, we're looking forward to it, I think. You know, one of the things I think he and I worked together for like the last year or so. And what's really nice is I think he and I complement each other really well and I hope that we can bring the work that we've done separately, you know, together up here to do some really good things, you know, I think Waterville has a lot of strengths that we can really build on, you know, and hearing things and going through the interview process, you know, making aware of the needs. And fortunately, I think the needs of the district meet our strengths, you know, and I think so together, I think we can bring those things in and really move Waterville forward, you know, I'm really excited, when I first started teaching. A lot of years ago, you know, we part, you know, I was a new Hartford teacher, we partnered a ton with Waterville, we had a whole lot of different initiatives running out in BOCs and stuff like that. And it's always been a really great place with strong teachers, strong foundation, people who really care. Thank you for the opportunity, thank you Dr. Spring, especially like in Florida at the point yesterday.
Thank you. Anything?
No.
No, get over it.
I'm really excited, I, I mentioned in my interview. I know there's great people here, you know, I'm from the community, my kids are starting school here and I just really want to see it do well and I'm really excited to get started here and work out, you know, work with people in kind of the process. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Well, and on behalf of the interviewing committee and, and the school district, we are thrilled to have the dynamic duo, the dream team here with us at Waterville Junior Senior High School and, you know, your caliber, your level of experience, your, your proven, you know, track record with curriculum instruction and leadership is just going to be a perfect match for us right now, so, so we're excited as well.
Thank you.
Anything else I need to look ahead for the board discussion? There was, we will move into our public comments. Anything? See anything online?
There was no, I gave such.
I should make a point. In our Capitol project meeting later, probably won't have the opportunity, we do have student, students in attendance tonight. And typically as tradition, we have you introduce yourselves. Let us know a little bit about your future plans. Not to put you on the spot. Just getting what grade you're in while you're here, they're like, hold on, wait, I didn't sign up for that. This Hanson didn't tell you about that episode.
I'm not really got this for you. Okay, you start, you can stand right here, you don't have to walk right up to me. Hi, my name is Kim and I recently moved to Waterville for my senior year. And oh, we had an assignment for school where we had to come sit in our board meeting and it sounded like tonight was convenient, so. Here, okay, thank you.
And you picked a good one to come to.
Signed their forms earlier, that's strategic.
Well, Mr. Stanton wanted to make sure they were gonna stay, he signed them early.
My name's Cory, it's all, I think the same reason to be the I just wanna finish my school work.
You're happy to be here. Okay.
Thank you very much, thanks for having me.
Anything else for public comments? Um, I do wanna we go into a recess and.
Well, yeah, so the, the public hearing isn't a meeting, so.
And as an alum, you wanna have anything outside? Well, what do you want? Public comment, anything you wanna talk about? You're gonna do your talking later, I guess.
Yeah. All right, well then, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second, thanks Steve, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
It's a record.
Again, they get an A for picking the right seat, you guys did an excellent job of putting this meeting out. You should get extra points just for that.
So I keep looking. We'll start the yep, we'll start the public hearing for the Capitol project at six and that will also be recorded, so we invite everyone to stay. If you have other things you need to do tonight, we understand that as well.
That's right, I kept looking up like I mean.
They did.
They go beyond that, except. They go beyond them, except.
Thank you. All right, well, welcome everybody to the public hearing for the 2025 Capitol Project. Um, we just ask if you've not done so, there is a little desk outside the door here with a sign in sheet. Um, just please sign in before you leave tonight, so we can get track of who's here. Um, aside from that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Spring for the presentation.
Thank you. Um, we're really excited about our our Capitol project, and we have our whole team here this evening, and I would like to introduce them to you. First, our architects from March Associates, uh, longtime partners with the school district. We have Chris Crowleyus. Chris, just take a wave. Um, and we have Matt Lacy. All right, um, and new to Waterville is our CNS, uh, construction management team. We have Nate Van Wee. And Damian Zombek. So Damian is a Watervilleian, so he's a familiar face here, so. So thank you for being here this evening. And our fiscal advisors, our financial analyst, Andrew Shariak. And, uh, we've had, um, a longstanding partnership as well with fiscal advisors, so. So we we have a great team of of professionals working with the school district. First, I'll start with the project scope. So the Capitol project, um, is comprehensive, and it includes upgrades to Memorial Park School, MPS, the junior senior high school, and the bus garage. We are looking at upgrading HVAC systems, um, looking at improving drainage in on our some of our athletic fields. Modernizing some of our instructional spaces, including science, uh, in fifth and sixth grade. And enhancing safety and operational, um, efficiency. So this all supports our long-term sustainability and student success. Um, and so it all starts with our. Started with our 2022 building condition survey, and we work with our architects on on that, as well as our construction managers. And it's a required plan, and from there, we look at our highest priority items and we start the discussion. So. So a lot of these items are from that that 2022 building condition survey. So at Memorial Park School, we are looking at. Air conditioning, so this is really exciting for us. So the units will be replaced, so we can meet the temperature requirements. That are now law, and that goes into effect on September 1st of this of this year. We are looking at reconfiguring our parking lot and our student drop off, so I have pictures of everything here, so this will make. More sense to you in a few minutes. So we are eliminating, um, that island there, if you are familiar with. Uh, coming into the student drop off at MPS and looking to add a new exit. We are looking to replace our fire alarm system. Um, it's old. We know that's a bad thing, um, so it needs to be replaced. We are looking to replace, uh, six doors in the hardware, so six of these doors in the intermediate wing at MPS are original. And they are not up to our expectations for safety standards. They have the very, very large windows. We're looking to replace lockers, and you'll see some of these are are extremely rusty. They don't close well. They don't open well. They are original to the building. You'll also see that we have some linoleum floor tiles that are cracked. Um, there are also some trip hazards, so those are also on the list to be replaced. Um, replacing ceiling tile, painting the cafeteria, upgrading art and music storage, as those classrooms. Are a little crowded. Um, we have a huge number of students who are interested in in those, uh, subject areas, which is a great thing, and we just want to make sure that we can. Um, better facilitate, uh, the the resources for those teachers. Upgrading our water supply system, um, and that supports our lead reduction program, um, in the school district. Again, I talked about flooring, looking to upgrade to mid-level science rooms. This will support the New York State Education Department. Uh, programmatic and curricular changes in fifth and sixth grade science. We're looking to replace the vestibule coiling shutter, so that's part of the firewall system, and that is to improve fire safety in the building. So here are some pictures, so you can see that is one of our old, um, HVAC units, and that will be replaced so that there is, um, air conditioning. Uh, you can see there, there's an island there, so that island is going to be part of the the site work, the, uh, replaced there. Here, you can see, um. That this here is one of the the entrance on this side. Drop kids off here. And then exit over here, so that's gonna be the plan. It will definitely help with the flow of traffic, so that there isn't. A lot of backup, uh, to East Bacon Street. Science classrooms, looking to add the demonstration tables there. So that's actually one of our our junior high students. You can see the linoleum flooring here. It's cracked. There's that transition there that is a tripping hazard, so. That all needs to be replaced. You can see here that, um, next to the terrazzo flooring, you know, the the linoleum tiles are cracked. And apparently, this is an old entrance to what was the gym at MPS, and that's raised there. Um, so, uh, so that transition also is is a hazard there. Uh, lockers, you can see they're very, very old, original to the building. Some of them are just way too small for all of to be able to hold all the students' things, so that's part of the project. Um, you can see here, there's a a very large window here, so these again are original to the building. And now with all of our safety requirements, um, it's just safer if we have a different door with, um, a different, um. Construction pattern there with with the window. So now the junior senior high school, um. It's no secret, we've had a lot of drainage issues with, uh, our baseball field, our softball field. Um, our modified softball field. Modified baseball and our practice soccer field, so so those are going to, um. We're gonna address the drainage issues there, provide power to the baseball scoreboard, which is definitely something. Um, that is needed, so that we don't have to bring a generator out there. And we're looking to replace the fire alarm system. Again, it's old, it's original, and, um. It's not a good thing if it just doesn't if it doesn't work, so it's really important to be, um, ahead of that. Replacing the ERUs, which, um, stands for the Energy Recovery Units. And what that does is it brings the outside air in to the school for proper ventilation. And so that needs to be replaced, along with the duct modifications to support that system. And the HVAC controls, which are very old. Um, so we're, uh, out of compliance with our region's safe, so we do need to upgrade that a bit. Um, so we're looking to include that, and then roofing. So it's an original roof. We've had a lot of repairs and patching to this roof, you'll see in just a minute. So this is the section of the roof that, um, needs to be replaced. We do have leakage. Uh, not currently, because we have, you can see here, this is, uh, what a patching job looks like. And also, we've replaced the edging here on the roof. Those all had to be replaced. So that that's a lot of the work that we've been doing to try to maintain the roof, and it's just gotten to the point where it needs to be replaced. So I don't know if you can see this mud here. Uh, well, that was what the softball field looked like, and, uh, unfortunately, our girls' softball team. Wasn't able to play on it, um, and so drainage issues that need to be addressed. And so drainage issues that need to be addressed. Bus garage, so HVAC and lighting upgrades, LED lighting. So you'll see in a minute, some of the old fluorescent lights there. Replacing the vehicle lift for the small vehicles, we've already replaced the one for our large buses and replacing the soffits and the lintels. So you can see here, there is water damage here, they, and they, these do need to be replaced here. This is what the lift looks like, it's old. You can see one of our vehicles is there, which is also old. Our sander, which is out of commission right now, not good, not a good time for it to be out of commission. But this needs to be replaced. And then you can see the old fluorescent lights at the bus garage, those also need to be replaced. So, so all in, the total amount of the project is eighteen million, six hundred thousand. So this amount also includes the technology survey that was conducted. And we have prioritized items that do need to be addressed to ensure long-term sustainability and infrastructure to support our technology needs and capacity. So now project finances. So the total project cost is eighteen million, six hundred thousand. As we said, we are using seven hundred thousand from our capital reserve. Our building aid ratio is eighty nine point seven percent. And it's a fifteen-year payback. And you can see here that the estimated additional local share for the proposed project is zero. That's really critical that everybody understands that. So the debt service schedule. So again, as I said, it was, it's a fifteen-year pay, payback period. The project is timed to align with retiring past capital project debt. So you can see that that goes on in twenty twenty seven. So, so the timing is perfect and what that means is that it's a stable payment and that payment is going to be roughly four hundred and twenty one thousand. You can see that in twenty thirty that we also will, will be retiring other debt. And at that time, we'll also come back to, to our, our community for another project so that we can continue to be proactive and maintain our buildings to really support, you know, a very rich learning experience for our students. So the capital project vote is February eleventh. We're holding it in the cafeteria, so we're coordinating off part of the cafeteria. So there will be direct access from where the bus loop is. We have signs, we have flags now, we just got that says, they say vote here. So we ordered those today and they'll be in. So if anyone would like an application for an absentee or early mail ballot, so please contact Jen Nichols and they can contact you until
The day of.
The day.
Need the absentee ballots back by, yeah.
Okay, all right. So if the project is approved by voters, the design aspects for the project will begin, you know, right after that. And then we will submit those plans to the New York State Education Department for approval and for issuance of the building permits. So we do have a, a website, part of our website is dedicated to the project. So everything's here, if anyone would like to go back and look at it. All right, here is more information and you can see this is the mailing that went home to everybody. And that is right here. Also explains a lot of the details. So if, so once we get the state ed approval and successful bidding and construction is expected to begin in the fall of twenty twenty five and continue through September twenty twenty seven. Wait a minute. Mike, where are you? Hold on. So at this time, are there questions? And we have our team of experts here to help us. Yes. So that's the intermediate wing where we have our fifth and sixth, fourth grade classrooms. That is the wing where the flooring is going to be replaced. Near the old gym, kind of near where the old gym was at MPS, but not where the new gym is. The gym floor, are you talking about the gym floor or are you talking about the hallway floor? Yeah, so, so we are looking to refinish the gym floor of both buildings. I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the hallways. Yes, we're not replacing, we're refinishing, yes.
Got a question on the drainage. Or anything, once that drainage is done, what else can we? Is there going to be artificial turf back there?
No.
No.
No? And Memorial Park Parking Block. Why is that being redone?
So there is a lot of backup onto East Bacon Street and the flow of the drop off isn't very, it, it takes a lot of time and we've got some parents here who do it every single day. And it's not a very efficient way to, you know, to get all of our students in.
So who should we point the finger at? Architect that drew it up?
Actually, I think what we're seeing is returning to school post-pandemic. We're seeing a lot more students being dropped off, being driven to school. And that's causing more congestion in the parking lots. So rather than not being proactive, we're trying to make it a safe environment for all the parents and the students at drop off and backup. What's that?
It was a part of dying.
Based, based on how things are right now and how things have changed, yes.
Right.
But at the time, I believe that was
It met our needs.
It was about the needs, but things have changed.
You want tax increase?
Correct. For the project, no, no tax increase, yeah. I don't know, Andrew, if you wanted to say a few words about it?
Yeah, the district has a really high building major issue. You can have spring mentioned, so essentially the way to think about it is obviously eighty-nine cents on the dollar getting back to the district. So obviously that pays for a large chunk or the overwhelming majority of it. And also as Dr. Spring mentioned, there's projects falling off, old capital project that falling off. So timing is to layer in with that, so there's no additional impact above current twenty-four, twenty-five taxes.
Eighty-nine percent, that's taxpayer, that's all of us.
The state tax, it's
We're all paying that.
Correct.
I understand you have that building. My next question would be, and I don't blame this board, why did it take so long if this stuff is outdated for it to be done? Who can I point the finger at?
Right, so, so there are no fingers. I think Waterville is, is very proactive in our, with every five years coming to the voters with building projects.
How long, how old are the fire alarms?
So the fire alarms are still working and we, they're on our building condition survey and they need to be replaced. We're not going to wait until they don't work anymore. So, and we can still get parts for them. I don't know if our architects wanted to say anything about
I think the, the fire alarms specifically, we anticipate a twenty-year life out of the system and this is the point where it's getting up to that point where replacement is, it's time to that twenty years. You know, every, as Dr. Spring talked about, you know, building condition surveys conducted every five years and that identifies a long list of items for potential improvements. The total scope of which would exceed the amount that could be considered in a project that wouldn't have a tax impact. So every five years, designs are prioritized and the highest priority items. Five, five years ago, we're just five years ago, the highest priority that were aimed at priority this time, get addressed now and then, you know, the cycle will continue. And if there's items that were identified now, that weren't as high priority, they will hopefully be addressed with next project.
Yes, Pam.
I know this always sounds backwards, but could you just touch on how debt helps your tax formula for this budget?
Yes, so I'm going to have since Andrew's here, we're going to take advantage of that.
Absolutely, so as part of the, the tax cap equation, it's a calculation every year. Part of that equation is a quote-unquote local share. And that's your existing debt for capital projects, minus the existing aid. If that capital exclusion drops off and, and you don't have that level year in and year out, then to go out for a capital project in the future is going to artificially appear as though you're raising taxes this huge number when what really happened is it dropped from, you know, the four hundred and twenty thousand level, it would drop off to some, say, just for argument's sake, two hundred thousand. To go back up to four hundred thousand is a hundred percent increase on that cap, capital excluded piece. So artificially looks like you're raising taxes this huge level and it's really just to get you back to the same level that you were at, which is why the timing is so strategic and the tax cap calculation can be a little hamstring to a district that is very important to kind of hit those, those tiny pieces correctly.
Question about the marks of baseball field. I see that you're fixing drainage. Some of the major, they're don't necessarily deal with drainage. Field itself, the baselines have a difference in some areas of five to six inches between the grass and the dirt. Are you replacing all that, are you?
Yeah, same, talking about it as drainage and probably by explanation. So the, the plant in the field is a complete replacement, fully filled next and regrading it so that it has the proper kind of ground across everything. So it's more than just drainage, it is also a full, excuse me, and creating. Sorry, sand, sand, dirt mix. The, the, the grass isn't being replaced except for in areas where drainage is being cut in. But the, all the, the baselines, the dirt area is being fully replaced and regraded.
It is going to have the grass.
Yes.
And I've seen in several other districts where they're doing just the dirt fields. Much more level and easier to maintain.
No, I, the, so the softball fields are, have that configuration, but the baseball field will remain grass.
But that's the maintenance issues, there's some concerns there. Another concern is it's very windy down there. And I didn't know that we used to have device, basically almost a screen that went around the dugouts that kept the wind out. They tend to rip. When it gets very strong down there in the past, maybe two or three years, anything like that may be considered as well as part of this project.
It hadn't been discussed up to this point, but it's certainly something
Sure.
That's a good point and, you know, I'm, I'm talking with some type of new facilities here. I'm open for all suggestions. When I got here, there was no windscreen, so maybe they were there. And when they went away, they didn't, they, they threw them in the garbage and that was it. I think it's an excellent idea. But then we can incorporate something that right in this project. And the ball fields are going to look like brand new. Now, the, the turf along that baseline, they're going to cut that. We're going to do all the line, it's going to be a sharp looking diamond with the proper, the proper thing. That's what, what we've got right now is we've got a building. That's why it's all what, it's going to be raised up. The mound will be rounded off, we've got all the measurements. And then you cut the grass and that'll be mounted, so cut, find off, feel a little bit, it's a little bit, and slims as well.
See there, here, hardwired scoreboard providing by the boosters. Is it possible to relocate that? Nobody can read in front of the dugout. Where it's located now, is any team important?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's one of these, you know. That could be done, but we, I've looked at the others, you know, like in the, the major, the center field, that, that's a little bit old. Yeah, we can look at relocation.
And I think I did talk to the coaches.
Yeah, last year the coaches didn't even use it because they didn't want to use the generator.
Yeah. Yeah.
That particular, the power issue was on the previous capital project, but couldn't be funded. That's how long it takes to, to re-resurrect. That's one of my babies too, is to get that power out of there.
Extension.
Oh yeah. No, you can't do that. So it's all for safety and it's all for the athletics and it's going to be great. It gets all done. I'm looking forward to it.
Great questions, thank you.
You can add about air at the Memorial Park, is it from the whole building?
Yes. Air conditioning, yes.
Technology, you also have a technology, where are you, your smart bond funding?
So we still have about seven hundred thousand dollars remaining with our smart bond funding. We are using that for, not smart, what? Viewsonics, thank you. We're using that to purchase Viewsonics for the whole district. We have some other infrastructure needs as well. Our phone system needs to be upgraded, so we are utilizing the smart bond money with that. Any other questions, students, any questions? You can see, Jackson, you're in the picture there. And that's our greenhouse, so that was our last capital project. And we're adding a plant science program now and strengthening our agriculture program. So, so that was really, really exciting as part of our, our last project. So if there aren't any, any other questions, then we are going to officially close our public hearing. I thank everyone for coming. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me in the school district.
Thank you for all the questions. Thank you very much.